I'd like to call and ring our school board meeting, ISU 701, for orders Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, at 3:33. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome everyone here, and with that we'll quote item two, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item three, Public Comment, Superintendent Rick.
And we have none, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to make an announcement at this end, I'll speak for the public. Following this meeting, there's a working session, so get that announced early. With that, we'll move to item four, Administrative Reports, Superintendent Rick.
Uh, pardon, Correctors, help me.
Oh, okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll check in. I'm just happy that, and Rick will probably talk about this later, but the enrollment report was really, really good, and so I'm happy to see if I did the math right, 39 up.
That's what it looks like, yep.
Yeah, and hope everybody got off to a great first day of school. So, been hearing a lot of good things about our schools, and hopefully we can keep the momentum going.
Pretty good. Anything else?
Um, I don't, I don't see it on the agenda. I don't know if you'll be talking about it. I know I've been out there about Mr. Turner, and I know I talked to him, and he was gonna try to attend, but I know he was coming from somewhere else and then had soccer at 4:30, so, um, are we gonna talk about that at all? This meeting, we're waiting till the next one. And I just wanna say something, so.
Well, we posted his position today. We can certainly talk about it.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I, I think it's important, um...
Excuse me, one second. Tell them what we're talking about. This is regarding Athletic Director Keith Turner?
Yes, um, so I just wanted to, I, I think a lot of times in our small community, a lot of bugs can happen, and rumors can start, so I just wanted to, you know, give credit to Mr. Turner, number one, for everything he's done for our district. I feel like he's, um, really gonna be hard to replace, um, and, you know, he is moving on by his own choice into a different opportunity. I just really wanted to make sure that people don't assume that this move was for any negative reason, um, within our district, especially around the whole, um, drama that we had around boys' basketball throughout the season, so I just wanna make that clear, that, you know, we're, we are gonna miss him, he is gonna be, um, tough to replace for everything that he put forth. I wanna thank him, um, and just, you know, wish him well on his new opportunity, that he's chosen in his own career path, so.
Here, here, I 100% agree.
And he did say that he would help us if we needed anything for a quick some time or something.
So Chair, are we gonna talk about that position?
It's gonna be posted.
It is posted. So I guess I would like to clarify, if we're not, I think that we saw over the course of my tenure on the Board, there's been unwritten practice, and I wanna make sure that we're giving everybody accurate and complete information. Can we have an administrator who is a head coach? So if there are interested applicants who are currently coaching, would they have to give up their coaching spot in order to apply? I mean, what's gonna be our protocol? Cause I don't want anybody to not apply, assuming that they can't coach and be an administrator, or vice versa. Let me just...
I remember we did make an exception at least once in my memory, where the athletic director was also a softball coach, I believe?
Baseball?
Well, I think it was baseball, many of them.
Oh, yes, and...
Two was a softball coach.
And maybe he was Tim Scott, too?
No, not on this earth, no.
Need you to stick over.
Well, like I said, I just want it to be perfectly clear, I don't want anybody to exclude themselves because they think one thing, and we haven't communicated, and then we change our mind.
I, my honesty, I mean, my, my gut tells me that that's not a good practice, to have an athletic director that coaches in a, in a head spot. Now, we've had some situations, and it even happened in Mr. Turner's tenure, where we were concerned if we would have a coach, and he would step up and fulfill that role if needed.
Until we found somebody.
Until we found somebody to replace him, but it is, um, it is almost impossible. I don't know how it could be done in this district, where you could manage a full-time coaching position and be the athletic director without us as a district allowing the AD to have paid supervision, that is not him, at all those events during that season, which is an added cost, obviously, but...
And I don't disagree with you, I just wanna make sure we're being very transparent to any interested person.
Which, that can be addressed when things start coming in, so.
Have we tested his resignation?
We have not.
Not good.
But we did post it. I, we, I, we received his resignation, we didn't do an addendum the last minute, again, I hate to do addendums for the Board, I know that is, so we didn't add it last minute, it would be on this upcoming agenda, which is the, I believe, 16th year. But he, we did speak, and he knows that we posted the position, because just out of timeliness, be hopeful to get somebody in place that could spend a vote-a-week with them, I'm hoping, or more, or longer, before he moves on.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item B. Administrators and staff, any of them?
Yes, we've, we've got Mr. Vestal here, and Mrs. McDonald, and I think Mr. Vestal's...
I get to go first?
Going first, yes.
Um, first of all, a couple of things, um, I do wanna just mention about kinda the start of the school year, obviously Brown and School there at Greenhaven, as far as who's there. Um, yesterday, we had our visitation, we had 302 out of 313 students' parents show up. So, I mean, out of 313, only 11 didn't show up, that's pretty remarkable. Um, so that was really, really neat to see, and it made today much easier, um, because everybody is much more comfortable walking in the building, they kinda knew where they were going, um, kinda knew what was going on, but we are doing some things over there this year that are completely different, and so it's gonna take a week or two, so if you hear a little chaos, expect it, it's gonna take a week or two to get things toned down and, and get things in order, but, uh, overall, we got all the kids that were in school home, so we won, um, today, and that, that was nice. Um, also, I did wanna mention and give a thank you out loud to Trim's Hair Studio, if you hadn't seen that on Facebook yet or anywhere, we did put it on social media, uh, they had a, uh, donation type thing where you could nominate your, a school, your favorite school, and they ended up drawing us, and we got a thousand dollars from them, um, so we will put that to good use over there. Uh, right now, we're kinda looking at how we can use it to benefit all the students, and that's kinda the key with that, so that was very nice. Uh, the main thing I wanna bring up is what's up on the Board. Um, every year, I've done this, and it works out really good, that I'm kinda one of the first ones to go, although I tried to talk to Mr. Aldrich, and not having that happen for some reason, it does. Um, our scores this year, these are the local schools, districts' overall scores, and the percents you're looking at are the percentage of students who tested proficient in that given discipline. So if you look at Hiving, uh, we had 44.4 in math, the state of Minnesota averaged 42.8, uh, reading 51 point, is that 51.5, uh, the state's 47.8, and science 45.8, uh, this, the state is 39.7. And we always like to compare ourselves to other districts, um, and we did better than every other district, except for Rockbridge in science, and except for, um, Grand Rapids in reading, and we were pretty close there. So overall, I think, um, you could be pretty proud of what we're doing. I will say, and I wanna be honest, that we are not to pre-pandemic levels yet, we are not back, and we're not gonna be for a little bit. Um, what I like to look at is down here, when I look at the third grade math, and I see, you know, 73, 72%, um, we're starting to come back, but it's gonna take time, um, like I told my staff, and I think I probably mentioned to you guys over the years, this kindergarten class coming in is really the first class that's coming after the pandemic in a sense. Um, and so I promised my staff that when we looked down the road, because all these kids were getting now, even though they might not have been in school during the pandemic, they had to deal with it, because their siblings were home all summer, all winter, they had to deal with not just them and their parents, and maybe more reading and quiet stuff, they had to deal with their brothers and sisters, and it affected them. And so this is where I think, like, right now, what we're seeing maybe with our preschool kindergarten coming in, we're starting to see now kind of an after effect of that, um, but don't think that things are gonna change magically, it's, it takes time, and right now, we're doing the best we can to catch everybody up. Um, and these are positive numbers, at least as far as we're concerned here, and I'm pleased with where we're at, and I think, uh, I think as the years go on, you'll see these numbers go up more, that's, that's what we're holding, so. Um, I did compare LES and give you the, the scores at Lincoln, and also the scores at the high school. Uh, obviously, next year, we'll have a GES in there, too, because Greenhaven, um, third grade will test over there, so we'll, uh, see where that ends up, too, so we'll have that next year. Um, but yeah, I don't know, I guess if there are any questions, um, all these numbers you can pull right off the state database, if you want, it's available to everybody, so.
Can we get a copy of this slide?
Yeah, I'll send it out, yep, I have a couple other people ask for that, too, so tomorrow, when I get to work, I'll just share it all with you.
And you know, Bob, I have to thank you, on Thursday, I was thrilled, and I stopped at your school first, I spent the day in the schools, and it was just amazing, and I like doing that every year, um, but just the teachers, you know, I was a little like, whoa, I'm in this school, I'm not supposed to see this teacher in this school, but, you know, it was like, where was I? But I just can't thank the teachers enough for their resiliency. Everybody seemed to just rise up to the occasion, it was not easy, but it was amazing.
And I'll, I'll give you a good example of that, I'm not gonna name the teacher, cause I don't think that's appropriate, but I have a teacher, a younger teacher, that, um, had a baby this summer, and, um, not only that, but had to come back and had to switch grade levels for me. Um, that in itself is amazing, and she's done it with, um, amazing resilience, toughness, um, she was in there early, she was in there often, I went into her class a couple times a day to see how things were going, she was just rocking it. So, I mean, I, my daughter just had a, a baby not too long ago, very similar age, and she's not going back to work for this year anyways, um, but she was the one who told me, too, she said, I don't know how she's doing that, and so to have your own daughter tell you that about someone else, um, that hit me pretty solid, so. I just think that all the teachers did an amazing job, you know, that is a good example of what, what, what they're doing right now.
You know, and the one thing I wanna bring up, because I am very proud of our district, I mean, over the last two weeks, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people that have contacted me about cooperative agreements, right, and that's a whole other conversation, but this just speaks so highly, that, I mean, there's nobody that even comes close to us, and like you said, we're not even close to pre-pandemic, but the one thing that I just wanna keep on our radar screen, and we did a lot of work in short order reorganizing the schools, but something that was brought to my attention, and not Thursday, was math. And I don't know how we keep this on our radar screen, to just do periodic check-ins. What I didn't know, I'll be the first to admit, that since we went from a seven-hour day for seventh grader, no, six-hour day for seventh graders in math, to a six-hour day to the Lincoln schedule, there were a couple things that were eye-opening to me, and again, I think we just, we did the best we could, with the time we had, and we need to keep it on our radar screen. They've lost close to 15 minutes of teaching time, face-to-face time, in, in some of these core subject areas, so what that does, I don't know, for a student who's in class that maybe is getting extra help from a teacher doing homework or whatnot, I just wanna make sure that, and the other thing I learned is that, and help me if I don't understand it exactly right, but in the seventh grade now, I was under the impression students were moving from class to class, which they are, but they're moving from class to class as a group, so you're with the same group of students all day, and that could be positive, but it could be challenging for some students. So I think we just need to keep that on our radar screen, and I don't want it to slip too far before somehow we do something, check in or check up to make sure that we shouldn't be doing something different.
And I can only speak for myself, but, um, I told my staff, I mean, and I've said a thousand times, we're probably sick of hearing it, and you've probably heard it, you say it, too, we're building this plane as we're flying it, and when you're doing that, you have to be flexible enough to know, okay, this is working, great, but this isn't, we can fix it, and we don't wait till next year to fix it, we fix it now. And so, I mean, just as an example, today, when we had the buses leaving, we have a kinda different scenario going now, and, you know, that was the only part of the day that was a little off-kilter, I felt like, the lunches went well, recess went well, but wow, that was, that was chaotic. And so right away, I just said to the teachers that were there, we had a little picture at the end of the day with everybody, and I just said, you guys gotta get your groups together, discuss this, tell me what we need to do to make this better, and do it quick, because I think by the, by next week, I wanna have something else that we're doing, or at least some alternate plans, or how it's working, and you can't fix everything like the minute it happens, cause this is gonna take three or four days just to filter itself out, but after this week, we'll take a look at it, and we'll reevaluate, and if we gotta change something, we change it.
And I think as a Board, I mean, academics first, right? Like, if that's a priority of ours, we really need to keep it tab and provide support if it's needed to do something to tweak it a little bit. And the other thing I shared with Renee and Chad, that I was surprised, I guess, and maybe I just had my head in the wrong place, but I wasn't aware that all seventh graders' elective was going to be Spanish, which is fine, so all seventh graders are taking Spanish as a foreign language, but I hope that we're also giving them the opportunity to next year continue on for those that want to, I mean, they're doing it this year because of the reconfiguration, but I hope if there's students that wanna continue on as an eighth grader, that we don't cause them to pause and wait till ninth grader, that if there's some way that they could possibly, um, register with the ninth grade group, and maybe not for credit, or I'm not sure how that works, but I don't want them to slip and lose what they've learned in seventh grade, so if there's anything we can do to keep that continuum going. I'm just thinking that I'm learning, that I guess, you know, maybe the devil's in the details, and we didn't talk about it at that level, but I think, as you said, you know, like, when things come to our attention, just tweak it, and do what we can do.
So I wanna talk about this, and I, I think we definitely, you know, have something to be proud of, we have to celebrate the, those successes, um, and also look and see where there's room for improvement, so where we're, where we're at, you know, when you look versus the state of Minnesota, um, absolutely, congratulations to all of our teachers and our staff and our students, that's wonderful, um, and there's no doubt, not just looking at the MCA scores, I don't think anybody can argue that we do have the strongest education up here, up on the range here, and, and the scores certainly reflect that. Um, on the flip side of that, I think every, every school regardless has successful students in life, in college, in careers, but, um, speaking directly to this, um, I spent some time on the Minnesota Report card myself, um, on Friday and today, um, and what I really dove into, what was important for me to look at is, okay, where, where we, where are we per the grades who took those tests? And really diving down, is there a group that is struggling more than others? Because, um, as I mentioned to you, that, it was a couple years ago, and I'm still not perfectly sure which one it was, but I, I remember Renee speaking about, it was either the seventh or eighth grade class at the time, and they were the, they were the group that was struggling, and I, I was just kinda curious that, you know, where are we today? Um, are those, is that group now as older students still struggling, or is it, are they, are they back to where they should be, or is it seventh grade that hang up again, where we see a lull? So I dove in, and what I did is I looked per grade where the state was, where we were compared to the state, and then just looked, did we increase or decrease looking from last year? Cause I think we have to celebrate, too, even just looking at a year span, did we, did we have better scores? I think, again, that's something to celebrate, even in one year. And I was amazed, I know that, you know, reading is a hot topic, and we got the Read Act coming in, but I will tell you, out of the seven grades, um, there was only one grade that was not above the state average, and only two of the grades that didn't increase from last year, and there's seven grades that take that reading test, and, um, so I was really impressed by our reading scores, but yet not impressed, because I know sitting in the work for, um, the...
World's Best Work Force.
Thank you. Uh, meetings, what our staff is putting into their daily, um, class, their daily activity to increase that reading, and I imagine it's only gonna get better with the Read Act. Um, so really impressed there, and I, I think that's wonderful. Also, looking at the science, uh, which is a smaller group, again, um, our fifth and eighth grade beat the state average again, which is awesome, and the high school, they cool it as a high school group, um, eighth grade and fifth grade, they all increased from last year, and again, I just, I think that's important, that we just show an increase year to year, um, and then...
Can I add to that really, Director McPartey? Cause I think a, a piece of this, that's just something to think about, and it's been a few years, but the Owens Foundation made a huge investment into our science department for manipulatives and microscopes and all the tools that science teachers need, and I think we're starting to see some of that now. And the work that we've done to align our teaching to the science standards, I think that's the other piece, too. So I'm, I'm really proud about the science, probably more proud about the science than anything, cause I just know how hard that science department across the district works, and they weren't seeing gains like some of the other teachers were, so, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that's an important piece to it, too.
That's awesome. And then, you know, because Director McGufflin, you were talking about math, and again, this is based off of our entire district, I'm solely looking at the grades, so that's why there's the difference. This one, um, you know, this is where that room for improvement is, um, our third grade, our fifth grade, and our seventh grade were the only grades that were above the state average for math, but, or, I'm sorry, and they were the only grades that actually increased from last year. So math is really the, are the subject of difficulty, um, but I mean, again, I have all the confidence in our staff, and, you know, there's multiple reasons for, for a decline or not improving, I mean, do you want increases across the board be number one? Yes, is that realistic all the time?
Right.
But, I mean, to have reading, to have science, that's awesome. I think to dive into that math and figure out, you know, what, what were the third and fifth grade and seventh grade doing that really worked, that became strong, because they were increased in both those categories? What, what is different? There, there, or where's the disconnect at the other grades? And I'm not a teacher, so I don't know what that looks like in the classroom, but I'm willing to learn and, and listen and, um, commit to helping if, if, if I can. But just really interesting, I think, to see, because you, you wanna catch those grades that are struggling, so they don't continue to struggle along the way, and if we can help them early on, all the better.
What I used to do with Lincoln was I'd take every year, and then I'd take the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth at Lincoln, and then I'd just move the graph over, so you could see, compare apples to oranges, because it's hard to compare grade levels to grade levels, because every grade level's different. But when you could look at the third grade from last year, how they did as fourth graders, how they did as fifth graders, how they did as sixth graders, that was really enlightening to me, too, because it was like, okay, are we seeing that type of improvement that we should be seeing? Um, and I do think, too, with like our fast bridge testing that we're doing now, where we're doing it three times a year, we're look, it's all about improvement, 100%, get better every test, and then obviously with the new curriculum that we got going, carry with math, I think, again, we'll see some, some benefits to that, too, cause I think then we're on the same page, and no offense to anybody, but we have been on the same page for a while with, with, across the Board, and by the restructuring, you know, all of my second grade teachers are meeting all the time right now, and they never met, I mean, barely ever met the last few years when they were separated, so that's really gonna make things better, too, I think, so, I agree 100%.
And I think if we get a pulse on the math, I mean, I think there's such a correlation between math and science, that if we lose one, I guess the other one would be likely to increase, so in addition to the investment in equipment, I think if we can figure that out, I think we're gonna see overall growth.
I'm just super proud of our scores, I just want, I'm super proud of this, I'm super proud of our parents and our staff, because this isn't just teachers doing this work, it isn't just the students, I mean, we need the parents' help, too. So, um, the, the other thing is, and I, I think it's important that we say that, we're not, we're not resting on these scores, that in a week and a half, Mrs. McDonald and our meeting, our district leadership team will tear this all apart, and make individual goals for each grade level, will make individual goals for some of our struggling populations, and our, our mission is to improve, it's about growth, and are we gonna grow to that extent every year? No, I don't think we will, but we're gonna try, that's the, that's the, and the other piece, we gotta remember, those kids that, that walk in here, all the things that are going on in the world, right? When they walk in that door at 8 o'clock, we gotta figure out a way to solve that, to get kids focused on their education, and that's where the real work is, is building those relationships, wellness with staff, wellness with students, mental health, that's where the work is. If we can figure that piece out, and get everyone here to feel good about being in our building, and the staff to feel good about teaching our students, the outcome is that by happen chance, our scores will improve, that's, it's the way it is. But Bob, Bob, Bob has done a great job, we've got an article coming from Maria at the paper, sent her a bunch of data, maybe she reached out to some Board members, I'm not sure, uh, but that was my message, that we're proud, we're not trying to point fingers at other districts, I don't wanna do that, and say that I'm better than you, that's, that's not something I'm proud of either, but I'm, I'm proud of where we're at, and I want our community to know that we're gonna continue to grow, and we wanna get better, not resting on our laurels.
And all of you know I hate to get carried with Donald compliments, but, um, she, uh, the position she's doing right now is extremely important for this district, I mean, I, and I don't know who's evaluating that, or how that gets evaluated, but as a principal, I can't do what she's doing, I can't get into the numbers and the, the instructional, um, framework and the things she's doing, it's just, there's enough time in the day, so what she's doing is gonna make, I think, a, a big difference in this district, I've been here a long time, and this is very positive change, and I appreciate that, that you guys took the opportunity to put her in that position, cause she's also very good at it, so, that's the last time this is gonna happen.
And I heard, and I heard many compliments carried, too, from the teachers about just the way you're coordinating everything, that you brought it together, so, so, have you gotten in contact with the sign company to update the next month's sign? So, that would make a nice picture, don't you think? Academics first, huh, too?
Okay, well, I just, I would need a directive.
You don't need to credit me on that, by the way, either, I, you know, I don't even mind him anywhere near that, thank you.
I think the Chair said he was, that was the Chair's directive, or something?
You heard.
Understood.
Make it so...
Understood.
Make it large, so we can see it when we go by, right?
Thank you, Mr. Vestal.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, I don't get too pushy, you know?
Well, I wanted to just update the Board, um, we have a lot of really exciting things going on, um, summer has never been so busy for me as far as preparing for In Service Week, um, I have to say, I loved Working July, which my husband says I need my head checked for, but it was, it was very enjoyable. So I'm just, I had given each of you a handout, just to kinda summarize what I'm gonna talk about, but, um, first thing I just wanted to talk about is some new and improved courses and curriculum and, and the academies, and I wanna thank you, because we have a commitment to academics here at Hiving, and programming, um, and not just buildings or extracurricular activities, and I think that that is, says a lot about you as a Board, that that has been a priority for us. So, um, and I have some text, new textbooks over there, if you wanna take a look at it, but one of the things that I did is I worked with Ryan Olson, who is our ninth grade college and career readiness teacher, to revamp our entire ninth grade college and career readiness course, um... Um, we have a textbook now that exposes the kids to, I don't even remember how many chapters there are in there, but many, many, many different career types. The hope is that now they'll be exposed to what all of these things are in ninth grade. And then we can kind of guide them through what their interests are through the academies um, after they take that freshman, um, course. They're going to be doing, taking a look at some of their interest inventories and all of those different kinds of things. But it's funny because when I go around during registration time and I talk about the different academies and I say, you know, how many of you are interested in the engineering academy? And they'll say, well, my dad said I should be an engineer. But they have no idea what an engineer is. So with our new curriculum in this ninth grade course, everyone should be able to define in some way what an engineer does and, um, all of the other careers. So I'm excited about that. Um, our intro to healthcare course is a new course. We have two full sections of that. I'm really excited. Jeremy Fleming is teaching that. And that course specifically introduces students into all of the different healthcare fields. And we're really trying to revamp our healthcare academy and make sure that people understand it's not just about doctors and nurses. Um, it's about, you know, mental health. It's, it's about the technician jobs and all of the different fields in healthcare. So really excited, excited to bring in our community for that course. I've had, um, people from the community already reached out to me saying they would love to come in. And now we have a perfect spat for them to come and talk to the kids about what it actually feels like to be a surgical tech. Um, made some good connections with Fairview and, um, they are very supportive about wanting to get our students to the, um, their site and/or come into our building.
Okay. Can I just say one thing? So we were on a, um, Perkins call. Um, and they said if every single senior went into a healthcare career, in every, every senior in the state of Minnesota, we would still have a shortage in the healthcare. That is how dire it is to get healthcare workers in all the different areas like Carrie mentioned. So, uh, that was really eye opening to hear that. And that's why we're, there's really a push and there's going to be some funding and, and things. So we need to grow that program. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy that Carrie's here and Jeremy Fleming is teaching those classes.
And actually, United Way has written a grant, $10,000 grant for us for this academy specifically, which is very exciting. Um, we purchased a new seventh grade health curriculum textbook because we were having all kids going into seventh grade health. And I wanted that curriculum to align with our ninth grade health curriculum. Um, so we updated that, uh, worked with James Pies on that. Um, because we're offering seventh grade Spanish to all seventh grade students, I worked with Dorothy Sadness to find an appropriate resource. You know, in seventh grade, they can't be learning all the nouns and verbs and all of the different, um, punctuation pieces as far as Spanish. We need to make sure that it's at their level. And we want them to get excited about learning a language and about culture. So that's really our focus in seventh grade is getting them excited about that. Um, Carl Sadness was able, we were able to bring back our intro to engineering course, which is exciting because then again, hopefully we can grow that engineering academy.
And his college and schools as well.
Yes, yes. Um, we have a huge increase in our membership in our academies. Um, over 200 kids are in our five academies, which is really exciting to me. So, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about things that went on during in-service week. But the first thing is, we purchased a new math curriculum for K-5. And I have to say, that kind of goes back to the fact that we did that, um, MTSS audit through the U of M. And one of the things that they said is, we need an updated resource that is highly based on fluency in order to help support math in our district. So, um, we had a committee of over, I think there were like 10 to 12 people on it that did research since January as far as which curriculum to choose, went through the process, selected a, um, curriculum in May. And, um, just some of the highlights of our new curriculum. It has a standards focus. It has best practices for instruction. So actually every lesson has two instructional practices for the teachers. It's either that traditional approach or it's more of like a discovery learning approach. And so we're hoping that kids will get to experience both of, both of those approaches. And it helps the teachers support either one of those approaches because some people aren't necessarily as comfortable with both of them. Um, it actually also has a social emotional learning component. Like Mr. Aldrich said, in order to get kids to focus on academics, we have to make sure we're meeting all of their other needs or they can't. They can't focus. And so actually the math has a social emotional component to the lessons, which is really kind of cool for that K-5. Um, and so teachers got to spend a day, half a day training with the, um, company and then half a day planning with their grade level team. Um, another thing that we embarked on, which, um, you know, we haven't done, had the opportunity to do a lot of this in the district, um, since pre-pandemic. But we had an entire day and a half focused on the academic standards, Minnesota Department of Academic Standards. And those are changing all the time. So we, I brought in two people from the Northeast Service Co-op who are excellent. And they worked with our entire, um, seven, 12 staff, some K-12 for like those specialists. And really did a reboot on the map academic standards, what it means to take a look at the standards, to decide, you know, if you're teaching the standards, how you're teaching the standards, how you're assessing the standards. I have to say, I have never been more proud of our high school staff. And I, I grew up with most of these people. I started here when I was 21 years old and I was scared. I didn't sleep the night before because I was like, I'm going to be booed up there. They worked so hard for that day and a half. It was impressive. And even both of the ladies from the co-op said, they had never presented to an entire like cross-curricular departments on standards. So we had math department working on math standards, science department working on standard, science standards. It was all over the place. Um, they said they were so impressed with how engaged our staff were that it was, it was awesome. So I have to give a huge props to our high school staff, um, and the K-12 staff that was there. They, they knocked me off of my feet. I was so impressed with them and nothing was thrown at me in, nothing. Um, so that was, and that standards work is going to continue for the high school staff for the next, um, eight in-service half days because the rest of the staff will be working on the Read Act. So I surveyed the high school staff last year to find out what kinds of professional development they were interested in. And the number one thing they said was standards. So I reminded them that when we kicked this off last week. Um, but we're going to continue this work throughout the year. Um, our special ed staff worked on some Fastbridge goal setting and trying to relate that to IPs. Uh, our counselors and school social workers did a training on, in, within Fastbridge. And if you remember, Fastbridge is like the test that we give three times a year on reading and math. There's also a behavior assessment in there. And so I'm trying to kind of find a process to identify behavior data so we can, um, help students intervene earlier, um, on behavior things and provide services, you know, at different levels versus just having to, um, have them be placed in special education. Our counselors are going to spend this year working on personal learning plans. So every student will have a personal learning plan based on ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade, on their interests. Um, it's going to be kicked off in this ninth grade class with Ryan Olson and then the counselors and the rest of the staff. We're going to work through a plan that helps support them. So, you know, you may be able to, as a counselor, go into the student's Google document that shows, well, this student's interested in this, they've been involved in this. Um, they, this is currently their post-secondary plan, but it'll be revisited every year and it's a live document. So that's exciting. Uh, so school social workers also worked on an attendance awareness campaign. Talked to LeAnn Johnson today from the high school. She wrote up a, uh, kind of a spiel that are, is going to be, um, on our student podcast. They're going to talk about how important attendance is. And then the Carrie L. Read Act training, um, which I don't think was as painful as everyone had anticipated. Um, I have to say again, from a perspective of knowing what other districts are doing right now with their schedule and trying to require teachers to do 42 hours after school and then having to compensate them for that time, um, it's really stressing those teachers out. And so the way that we've built our schedule and our calendar to support our teachers through this training, I think, is going to ease their stress and help with their learning. And that's all I have. I think I beat Bob this time.
Carrie, can you give me an example of, so with this new math curriculum that you talked about? Um, it's, you said that the social emotion, social emotional learning is also a component of that. Give me an example of what that looks like with a math class.
So if I'm going to borrow one of these resources, just so I can kind of show you what I'm talking about. So in the program design, there's a social emotional learning component. And it's basically trying to support these categories, which would be relationship skills. So it might be sitting down and talking with a partner about a math problem. Um, it's social awareness, self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making. So those are the kinds of, and there's like, uh, social emotional learning objectives. For example, this objective states, students collaborate with peers to complete a mathematical task. So it's not necessarily like talking about anxiety, but more of those social skills, those soft skills that I'm currently working on my work-based learning students as seniors and trying to support those throughout.
Okay. Um, I don't know if this is really a question for you or if it's more for Mrs. Sikora. Um, so I know a few of our high school staff, um, have talked to me about, now that our days are 10 minutes longer, correct?
Correct.
Um, that they've been requested to spend 10 minutes, the last 10 minutes, focused on social emotional learning. Now whether or not that's correct or not, did you send out an email requesting that, asking that?
Yeah, so, yeah. I, I'll go sit over here. And I, and I, Carrie, I don't know if you talked about the onward book that
No.
Okay. So for the 10 minutes of our day, we need a tier one social emotional learning, kind of a program or curriculum, um, that every student gets. So for the last 10 minutes of the day, or sometime during their seventh hour, because if you are an aquatics teacher, maybe you want to do homeroom before you jump in the pool. You know, depending on what they're doing. Um, but they stay in their seventh hour for 10 minutes longer and that teacher is responsible for going over things like handbook things, hot and burning items that they need to, to talk about. Maybe they have a discussion about the hat rule and the cell phone is a hot button topic. So how do cell phones impact your life? And how do you see it working in classes and things like that? So we, our leadership team put together a Schoology, um, class, much like any other, like a science class or a math class. And it's called homeroom and it has topics, it has resources and everything daily so the teachers can access that and talk about it. But this week it's all, well, this whole month, it's bus safety, handbook items, um, what happens if you have violation, um, talking about drinking at parties, you know, things like that and getting into those class discussions. So that's for everybody.
So how do, how are you or the leaders, um, monitoring that? How do you know that the staff is actually following through on that request?
So there's a lot of trust, first of all, like I, Mr. Snyder and I cannot possibly in every, be in every single class to learn, okay, are you actually teaching math today? Or, you know, so we, there's a lot of trust that goes along with that. But we also have our counselors, social workers, anyone who doesn't have a class seventh hour. So if they have a prep or duty time, they're teaming up, um, and with each other. And the counselors are going into every single homeroom this year so that they can learn about all the kids and they can see what's going on and help out the teacher and support them. Um, but we will be, you know, we'll be popping in to visit and making sure. And every month when we have those in-service days, we're taking a half hour and the leadership team is presenting to the staff, here's what we're doing. So on the August 28th in-service day, we took a half hour, met with every staff, showed them how to find that lessons in Schoology. And they're also broken out by grade level because an eighth grade topic looks very different from a senior topic and discussion. And so depending on the grade level you have seventh hour is what you're going to be talking about and how deep you go with that. And so we went, on August 28th, we went through every day through September 16th. And now on September 16th, we'll have another in-service day. We'll take another half hour of staff development time to go through here, the next set of topics. So people really are prepared for that time and have the materials and resources that they need. So as, as far as other accountability checks.
I've got the three topics for the first September here.
Okay, so there, it's handbook resources, setting goals and how social media in schools, you know, kind of.
So that's, that's the month of September. Those are our three, our three weeks worth of
Which are, I mean, all relevant, all good topics. I think the reason why I brought it up and why they're bringing it or talking it to me is they don't necessarily have the buy-in. They don't, aren't seeing the value of spending that. You know, the comment made to me was, this is not what high school kids want to talk about. And honestly, I don't want to take 10 minutes. I want to teach X, Y, Z, you know, what I'm doing. So why do I have to do it? And I think it's important that if we're asking them to do that, that there is some sort of, again, you can't be everywhere. And of course you're going to trust your staff. I, I don't doubt that. I just think it loses its value if they know, if I don't do this, nobody's going to know and it's not really going to matter. I can fluff in these meetings and we don't want that, you know? I, I don't want that. And really, it's good for these students to talk about those three categories that you just listed off and probably all the other ones that'll come up in the year. But I don't have the answer, but I don't know how we bridge that gap of the staff, like seeing the positive side of doing it and then, you know, wanting to do it rather than, you know, not wanting to do it.
And one of the things too, Mr. Murfeld, um, who's part of our leadership team, he's going to be developing, um, student surveys too. So there'll be surveys given to the students throughout the process to see how they, do they like the topics, do they not like the topics? Are there certain topics that we're not addressing in these homerooms?
So that's checks of that. So you have stuff to do with that, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand, this was, you know, we, as a leadership team and department chair, all last year, we were talking about what we're going to do when we, when we found out we had to add 10 minutes and how is the best use of that time? And yes, there are people that are completely champions for it. And then there's people that are probably the saboteurs, you know? And then all the people in between. And we're trying to, to show that this is beneficial. And you might think, yeah, seniors don't need this, but they do. And they'll find out that they do because we have seniors who do get in trouble and violate the handbook and are not able to go to prom because they made a mistake. You know, things like that. So if we can prevent any of those, of those things from happening and, and teach ahead of time, I think it's going to be beneficial.
And I understand what you're saying, but I think getting the counselors like into the classroom periodically.
And they're adding to the, the list as well. So anyone, any teacher has that, we're all admins or all teachers on the Schoology. So if people find a really good topic, they can add to it. Some people have found videos and, and things that they want to put in. And the counselors want to add things about that personal learning plan that Carrie brought up so they can set goals and talk about resumes and, and things like that in that homeroom. But I also understand, if you went to school to be a physics teacher, you're thinking, this is my passion. I'm here to teach physics. I've never had to teach, you know, skills like cooperative.
But at least for me though, like I view this as a good time because it's always a tough balance of instruction time versus the other stuff that we do throughout the day. So i- if I'm a teacher and I'm given this 10-minute timeframe where I could just talk about handbooks or goal settings, then I don't have to take away from my lesson and try to rush through things. So that way, you know, I'm doing a lot of front-loading and saying, like if I'm really hitting the handbook every single day for the first week of September, three weeks down the road when a kid is goofing off or something, there's really no excuse for them to not have an understanding of the expectations because that's what we've been spending on for 10 minutes every single day.
Because we have to talk about bullying, we have to talk about the sadistic and malicious conduct and all of that.
Previous district that I worked for, we had homerooms and the, the staff, high school staff loved it. They used it as a tool just, just to build relationships with kids, just to talk. You know, something off, off-topic, off the math or the science. The other, the other thing that, um, happened in that previous district is, um, we went from a six-period day to a seven-period day, or excuse me, seven-period day to a six-period day and we lost our homeroom. And all of my staff wanted it back. And I didn't have the financial resources to put it back. And all of my staff wanted it back and I didn't have the financial resources to put it back. So I, I wondered, you know, well, end this year, this 10 minutes, we'll go back to our original calendar. I wouldn't doubt that you might have staff saying, how do we keep these homerooms? But how does that, how do we find a way to roll this into the next year? That's, that's just a wish.
Yes, that could very well happen.
And I feel like we have to give it time. I remember being invited into one of Dana Lindstrom's classes and I don't recall the name of it, but kind of where they were talking about some of the personal development and growth topics. And I think what she had said is, once students started engaging, it takes everybody a little bit different amount of time, but once they got comfortable doing it, just getting those kids to talk and to open up, it really, it really.
Makes all the difference.
Made all the difference in the world. I'm excited about that. I think that's really wonderful.
And what, what Carrie didn't mention is one of the things the high school staff is all doing together is a book study. It's a book called Onward and it's about educator resilience. And it's, the whole point of it is to try and reduce the stresses and barriers and teacher burnout. It's an excellent read and the person who wrote it divides it, all the chapters are by month. So it starts out with June and what you're feeling in June, wrapping up the year. And then it goes in month by month and preparing for school and, and the stresses of September, Christmas break and all, and all those things. And so it has really good activities and really good discussion points. And so when teachers learn about themselves and, and read this book and we discuss and we have a facilitator, some of that things, some of those can be translated into their homeroom. Because if they're learning about themselves, they think, oh, I could use this with my, with my juniors, for example, so.
And I think these two textbooks, Career Explorations and that Careers in Health Science, they look really, I mean, like, I would love to read those books. They look awesome. I mean, I hope parents take a look at some of these things. These are really good.
So they actually get hardcover books still? Because everything seems to be online.
And our, there was a grant that covered our internal healthcare book. So, and then the ninth grade book, we did purchase textbooks for the students and they also have access to the online version.
I love the book.
I'm always begging Alex for money.
I like books too.
Well, good discussion. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to item C and committee reports. Hearing none, we'll move to item five, motion to approve the agenda.
Omo.
Support.
Move by Director Poltrus, supported by Director Gavardi. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters, same sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you. Then we'll move to item six, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Omo.
Support.
Move by Director Poltrus, supported by Director Mottafin. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, sometimes I get confused on these postings here. So under G, number three and number five, so the posting, this is where I get confused. It was posted on August 12th, you had to have it in by the 19th. It must have been filled.
Internal, internal.
Internal. And then now, and now three and five go together.
Correct.
So, and I, I did email Trina about this. She kind of went through it, how the internal employee gets a 10-day kind of like trial period to see if they like it. And if that is not something that they wish, they'll go back to the original position, which I believe is at the Washington, the secretary at the Washington.
No.
No, okay, I take that back.
No, this, so this, this secretary position is halftime at the Lincoln, halftime at the high school.
Yes.
And leaving a pair of positions to take this.
Okay, then I'm not sure how that, our conversation with Trina also dealt with the secretary administrative assistant at the Washington.
Oh, okay.
And how if the 10-day trial doesn't work, then they'll be posted external, but that'll still, then it'll possibly go to the Washington is what I understood from her email. So that's why I got a little confused here, looking at, you know, the dates of things and, and the, and the name in our email, so.
So, so in that, in that secretary that's currently, that's trying out that position has waived that 10-day trial and they're, they're staying there.
Okay.
So.
So that is what number five is?
Correct.
So she is keeping that?
Correct.
Okay. And then we do not have a position open at the Washington that was filled with the, you know, senior retired and that was already filled.
Yep, and that was.
There is nothing open.
Nope, and that was through an internal process also.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And just.
It's very confusing.
Well, when you look at the date, because when we, yeah. And then I appreciated Trina's email today that she sent out talking about, you know, who can apply the internal, external, because I, I get questions too, you know, hey, I'm a coach, I'm, I'm an employee, can I, I'm internal then, right?
Correct.
But that's actually not true. Because you're not based on the bar.
Birding.
Yes, so I was grateful for her email just because, you know, clarifies things when people ask me also and it clarifies that to other people who are questioning, so.
And that, and we've had some questions, that's why that went out today. And it, we do that once a year, I think folks forget, but we'll keep reminding them.
But it was, it was nice to just get that clarification. And again, I was just confused on that, but thank you.
One thing that we did say though, is that employees, it's employees' responsibility to read their contract and understand. And, and you know, because sometimes we will end up, you know, in a, oh, excuse me, in a conflict. But it's, ultimately it's their responsibility. So that's sometimes where people struggle, they haven't read it. They assume or they listen to somebody else and then that's where the miscommunication usually happens, so.
Thank you, that was all that I have.
Okay, you're welcome.
I have one. And so we're hiring more PSAs.
Oh, yes.
So this MTSS is meant to reduce the number of PSAs. When can we expect to see results?
I don't know if it's, if MTSS necessarily is meant to reduce the number of PSAs. Again, we're, we're trying to identify strategies for students early so they don't end up in a referral process. But a lot of our students that we're hiring these aides for, these, these are severely handicapped students. They're coming in with severe needs from other districts. And they've had one-on-one support in the previous district that they came from. So that IEP follows them and we have an obligation to follow. So we'll meet with the parent, we'll discuss if it's still a need. And nine times out of 10 it is, other districts aren't willy-nilly assigning PSAs to people. But that's kind of the process, how it, how it happens. And yes, we've gotten a lot of students that enrolled this year that require aides. Pretty good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters, same sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you. With that, we'll move to item seven, move to Ministry of Business, Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I may as a motion to approve the contract prevented meals between ISD number 701 and the Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Support.
Move by Director Martin, supported by Director Mottafin. Any discussion?
Reading this contract gave me a headache.
Yeah, he usually does all the years with the.
All the pages after pages of who does this and what the laws are and, oh my gosh.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters, same sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
I may as a motion to approve the after-school meals agreement between ISD number 701 and the Boys and Girls Public and Northland for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So. Support.
Move by Director Gavardi, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters, same sign. Motion, Carrie.
Chair, I'm abstaining from the vote because I'm on the Boys and Girls Public and Northland government supporting.
Let them, minutes, sir, thank you. And thank you for doing that. Okay, so we all in favor, agree with it except for one extension, which was qualified. With that, we'll move to item seven, discussion items.
The only thing I wanted to say, Mr. Chair, is that we just really had a great start to the school year. I think that, that visitation day is, is kind of unique to our area, but it's, it's really needed. I've got so many thank yous from the staff today that we had that visitation day, along with all of the other work that they had to do to get their room ready, the moves. They were just very grateful for the visitation day. I also spent the last couple of days at the Washington Early Learning Center in the morning and after school. And I just, all of our staff, right, again, I thank them, but those, those teachers that work with little kids, they are something special. They deserve something special. There was so much crying this morning and leg-holding and, and I see all these parents and, you know, young parents struggling with letting their kids go to school. And I just kept saying to them, you know what, we got this for you. Go home, kick your feet up and have a nice morning and, and you know, we'll be here and ready for you after school. And it just, it just, it's moving to see people work so hard. And they, those really, Learning Center folks and their head start partners, you know, that are right there, they, they are awesome. So all of our staff, thank you, but a big plug out to those people that work with little kids, they deserve it, so.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item nine, Jeff.
Motion, Chair.
Chair, I support the thought objection, the meeting's adjourned, day 433 and thanking everybody for coming.
Advanced Redon Solutions is a local company servicing northeastern Minnesota, including the Iron Range. Call them at (218) 491-3752. Scan the QR code or visit their website at deleteradon.com to learn more about the dangers of radon in your home. HPAT thanks them for their support. Hibbing Public Access Television would like to thank the Hibbing Foundation for their donation and ongoing general support. HPAT thanks Premier Fitness at the Luxe for their donation and support. They welcome individual and family memberships. To learn more, call them at (218) 440-1191.